Hello and thank you so very much for joining me tonight. I go by Lunenate. And you know, I haven't really shared lately the story of my name and how I chose my name. And I thought I might just introduce it to you here. But just to let you know what to expect with our video after my little name chat. We're going to be focusing on compassion, yes, empathy, yes. But also the key point or the little um area to focus on here is the common ground between you and everything. You and yourself, like your outside self, your, your, um, what do we call it? Like the book cover, how you engage with the environment, your inner self and the commonalities between that, although they might feel like different people sometimes. I know mine do, I'm quite introverted, but I'm also a Leo rising, so I have this kind of kind of thing going back and forth, right? You and your enemies, you and, you know, the people you think you would never have anything in common with. Everyone has a similarity, everyone has this, um, we could picture a grid, a, uh, what do we call this? The kind of seed of life, the germ of life, the germ of life, the seed of life, and how it continues into the flower of life and beyond. I feel like I'm missing a few steps there. Or there's the phrase, the, I'm gonna pronounce it wrong, I'll put the word here. Uh, like vicious Pisces or, I'm so sorry, I just haven't heard it said out loud, so I don't know how to pronounce it. But it's also known as, or translates to the fish bladder, you know, that's like space when things come together and it translates to fish bladder. I know how funny, right? But I just want us to be able to connect with that empathy, whether you use to connect with yourself, if you're feeling disconnected from yourself, if you're feeling inauthentic, if you're questioning your actions, if you're reflecting on what is important to you and am I showing up for that, right? A bit of potentially like cognitive dissonance. I hope I'm using that term correctly. I've heard different definitions for the term. Or if you're looking to kind of break down a barrier of sorts that you have in connecting with your friends or seeing your partner's perspective or being able to be patient and just listen first before you are too quick to, um, you know, like judge or throw up a defense, you know? And of course, I'm not talking about necessarily like really hardcore, like evil that we have to connect with, although we could, you know, that's just deeper. We don't really have to go that deep. If you wish to go that deep, please go ahead and set that intention and allow yourself to. But I'm not trying to force anyone into that. In general, I just want this to be this connection of you and everything else and how you can relate, how you can be compassionate, how you can be truly empathetic, truly supportive to yourself or to others. Alright, so I'm just gonna take a moment, so okay, this is gonna be a more chatty video. The last one I made wasn't so chatty, I go back and forth, alright? So if you're not into it, please just choose another video, there's so many here on YouTube. But I just feel, for whatever reason, I haven't talked about my name. And maybe some of you are chewing on this as you connect with yourself, connect with your higher self. Where is the common ground between me and my lowly earthly desires? Being a little teasy there, right? And my highest, most pure, um, uh, pure aspect of your soul or like your highest consciousness? Like where is the, where is the connecting point, right? So maybe you're considering naming your higher self, maybe you're considering developing a pen name, maybe you're, you know, seeing that we all are so multifaceted and you choose to name yourself or your work or even just your, you know, your YouTube handle, there's different ways we choose our own names, right? So I'm sorry, this is not related, but it just kind of wants to come out. But, um, I always love pen names. I've got many pen names and Lun was a name. Well, let me rephrase, cheese was always a thing for me. When I used to have my little graffiti tag back in the day when I would hang out in Philly, um, or South Jersey, I liked cheese was always my, my tag, extra cheese especially was my tag. And then I started going by like moon cheese and then it became Lun fromage to make it a little like, you know? And then as I wanted to create a name for my channel and I became more of an energy worker over a much, you know, extra cheese to Lunenate seems like what the hell? But, um, basically, um, Lun and Nate came from Lun fromage and it was just a kind of unfolding. My brother even has like a cheese name that he goes by too, we've kind of got a little thing going on. And just basically, I love the way Lunenate sounds, it sounds like it reminds me of illuminate. Innate to me is like that inner knowing, you know, what innate means, your inner knowing, your kind of hermidesque or Sagittarius-esque personal truth, right? So Lun, obviously moon, reflective, illuminating, shining a light into the darkness, into the void when we have a full moon. So that's where it comes from, if you're curious. But it kind of started with extra cheese somehow. I feel like I missed a few steps along the way, but hopefully you kind of get it now. Alright, so we're going to start with our candle. And this is actually a candle from my Aries season batch, we could say. I'm doing this little project on Patreon, just for Patreon. These are not like products, you know what I mean? They're like, they're like me baking you brownies or cupcakes or something. It's like a handcrafted manifestation candle that I am inspired each month to create by the zodiac season that we're in. So this is our Aries one. I think they're pretty, but they're still a work in progress. So anyway, we're going to get our matches. Oh, there's only two left. I don't know why it always draws my attention, winding down on a matchbox. And light our candle here on behalf of the highest and greatest good and perfect comfort and alignment. I might have, should have trimmed this wick a little bit, but I think we'll be okay. So you can set your own intention or follow mine. You can say this in your head, you could say it out loud, you could just say, hmm, that sounds right, yeah, what she said. Or of course, I want you to have the invitation to use this video as however you see fit at your personal comfort level. If you find, um, you're just here for, to relax and some ASMR, that's great, I hope you get that. If you're here to chew on some thoughts, to communicate to your subconscious mind, well, I hope you'll allow that as well. And if you're open to the concepts of energy work by proxy, I am an energy worker. I know how strange that can sound, but I really study the esoteric and different healing modalities. Of course, Reiki is my foundation, but sometimes I see comments like, oh, this isn't the Reiki I know. And that makes sense because it has, yes, my, you know, the training that I have with Reiki, but it also comes from my actual practice and what's been revealed to me and, you know, on my journey, my practice of Reiki. And also all the other things that I study and practice as well are kind of layered to get my own unique, you know, uh, energy work sandwich, just like other practitioners have their unique yummys, munchies or whatever, alright? So on behalf of the highest and greatest good and perfect comfort and alignment, it is our intention today to support you, you, yourself in connecting with the world within you and the world with, around you, with the people in your life, with the characters you engage with, whether in books or, you know, stories or movies or whatever, with music, with the arts, with nature, with storms, with lightning, with tides, with your inner self, with your more exterior self, with your higher self and your more grounded self. And just kind of tuning into that bridge and we also have an added benefit here. Like we're doing this for empathy, we're doing this to connect, this is just beautiful work to do. But what is kind of an added bonus to this is as you realize you're connected to everything, you realize you're connected to everything, including your manifestations, including your desires, including your wishes. And they are all here for you to experience and they're already, you know, part of your bubble just by your acknowledgement or desire or daydreaming or wishes or whatever that might be for you. So I'd love for you, if you're open to it, of course, no pressure, no brush, but to have a gaze, have a look at this little candle here, at this little flame. Crafted with love and beautiful intentions, may I say, if I may say, and send in your own wish. You can use this video over and over again, so I would let you choose however you see fit today. Are you looking to connect with your higher self, your inner and outer self, if you will? Your higher mind and lower mind, your self and your relationships, um, people in your life, nature, creativity, literally everything, you know, literally everything. Nothing is too abstract here. To find your common ground, find your connections or just more, more, um, more effectively realize those connections, because it's not like we're creating them, they've always been there. But our will, our awareness, highlights sends power to, we could say, or empowers those connections even more. Alright? And if you're in the Patreon community with the, this tier, everything was shipped yesterday, which is Monday, so I hope you do get them in time for the new Moon and Aries. It looks very pretty. So we're gonna start today with a little combing. We have a selenite wand here, it is a little dusty, now that I look at it. Just have to pardon the dust there. Bring it back. Hi. And we're setting an intention to do this energy work by proxy or simply chill out, right? Wherever you're at, but from that perspective, from the energy perspective, we're setting an intention to use our selenite wand here to begin to release from our auric field, from our more outer perspective or outer field that we sense, right? Our, our fish bladder, we could say almost here. And how we're connecting with the world around us and the world, how the world connects with that which is within us, right? That radiates back to us and inspires or motivates. Please forgive the trafficy sounds and any like other sounds, because there's some people working on an apartment over there. And I don't wanna not produce the video just because it's a busy day here. But again, getting back to our gorgeous wand here, as we comb through the aura, we're just releasing the, the clouding, the, um, inability to connect, the, um, kind of like beliefs or how can I put that better? Sorry, I'm struggling with my words a little today, I can tell obviously, right? But, um, like a grease or a coating or something that inhibits that pure connection with what's around you and what's within you. So we're going over the crown here, I'm seeing almost like the Tibetan flag. And we're combing through the auric field, down the body, again over the head and focusing much way above the head. Brushing all the way to the floor, focusing even under the feet and though I can't stick my hand through the floorboards, focusing down below the feet. Feet below, yards below, meters below, just clearing that connection, channel, the connective channel. Going around your back, your shoulders, the back of your head, down your spine, down the back of your legs. And again, focusing all the way below the feet. And then going through the meridians and the legs and in the arms. You might hear some voices outside, I do hope that doesn't bother you too much. Down the spine again, focusing more deeply now, just clearing these channels. We're gonna use this smaller, more precise little mini selenite wand. Focus in to the channels of, again, perception, connection, how your mind, how your heart, how your soul, how your body all work and flow together. Empowering these channels. Focusing through the senses, the meridians of sense. And not just the physical senses, although we can include them, but your subtle senses, your imagination as well. Excuse me for bumping, bumping your mic here. And channeling through these currents, the activation, a bit of an initiation through the intention to help you connect with everything. And of course, not in a, oh, everything is affecting me, I'm connected to everything, I feel everything, not that. That's not it here, in an empowered sense, always empowered. Our intentions are always about your own unique empowerment. Do you have some other crystals to share with you? This is a beautiful piece of kusai, kunzai. It's like a soft lilac kind of color. And this is, oh my god, so yummy. This I believe is from Monkey Moon, if you're curious. And this is so beautiful for the, for transitions, for supporting transitions. And the way that I'm seeing this in my mind as I, you know, I'm working with these intentions and selecting my tools, there is a transitional sort of theme, right? When we work through any part of development, any changes within ourselves or how we connect. So I want to bring this in and sweep this through your energetic body with the intention of channeling through and support the comfort and still, not stillness as in stagnation, but peace, harmony with these transitions, with these developments within yourself and how you connect, how you feel connected to everything in this world and beyond. The common ground you have with stars, with celebrities, with gorgeous paintings, with the past, with the future, with your ancestors, with those on the complete opposite side of the, what appears to be some kind of spectrum here. Different lives, different worlds, the other side of the world and all that we have in common. We just want to be loved, we just want to be free, we just want to be supported and do work that is meaningful to us. Eat good food, share smiles, laughs, cuddles. There's so much we all have in common. Okay, I'm just gonna place this here, our little grid over here that I have going. The next stone I have is another from Monkey Moon, this gorgeous aquamarine, how beautiful. I love, 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 love these formations and there's just such a, a cool nature to aquamarine, isn't there? I mean, just look at it. In fact, let me see if I can bring out this thing that people suggested. Kind of blows it out though. But it's got this super pretty. The birds really love. Love this piece over here. Anyway, you get it, it's beautiful. And it reminds me of the tides, but it also has this, or the oceans, the watery elements, but it also has this like otherworldly quality to it. So I really wanted to connect with that, that otherworldly, unexplainable, in the void, innate connection that you have with literally everything, with light, with earth, with dolphins, with everything. And how beautiful it is to honor that connection. So we're gonna focus again, channeling through, calling in this energy to your energetic body, yourself, your connecting points, your perspective, your awareness, your wellbeing. And I want to focus specifically in the point between the crown and third eye, this kind of higher brow area. Just calling in your most, again, otherworldly qualities or, I'm so sorry, I'm just having a hard time explaining what is unexplainable, go figure. Calling down your messages, your activations, your inspiration, your creative thinking. To receive these messages. To feel these connections. To be able to focus on those yummy thoughts when you need to. And tune in to this beautiful life. Alright, again, just gonna place this in our grid over here. Now we have two of the same stone. And these are peach moonstone, peach moonstone, from the real crystal witch. I know they have a website, but I often connect with the most on Instagram. And these are just so beautiful, these gorgeous felt spar. They're so soft, like the energy, the energy of them is soft. And that's kind of what we want to focus on here as we channel through. That softness in your ability to perceive, that sensitivity and your ability to see with truth, to realize. It doesn't mean you have to agree with everything, but just to find that common ground that we both might be in an argument right now, but listening, we both want respect, we both want to be heard. So let me, let me do that and let me expect that in return. Or communicate that need, if I'm in that, if that's the case. So we're just swirling this lovely nurturing, soft, intuitive, compassionate energy, calling those qualities out in yourself. Calling in your ability to intuitively, without the ability to fully explain, connect with everything around you. To see the other side. To express empathy, to allow your empathic channels. To be empowered, of course, but support your navigation, your development, your ability to serve and support and help other people, of course, too. I'm gonna focus on the eyes, and if you just pardon me a sec. Focus on your eyes. Cleansing the lenses. To think that you were ever separate, that you were ever isolated. And that your dreams and goals are so much closer. You're already sharing space, you're already sharing time, you're already sharing your dreams. Again, just adding this dark right here. Some little magic palm here from Deschampsia. We're going to just kind of blend the energetic news pour into the eyes, right, cooling aloe. So that as you see this, you don't feel overwhelmed or as you sense it, as you connect, you don't have to feel overwhelmed, it's beautiful. It's overwhelming, the way calling in love is overwhelming, you know? Just gonna spray. This gardenia. And just fill your auric field here with this gorgeous essence. And channel through again with the intention to find that connection. This can be so healing in our ability to forgive in a sense. And when I say forgive, I mean just to heal. And when I say forgive, I mean just to heal and move on and get over one stage and move on to the next of your healing. And sorry, I said that a little insensitively, cause I know we don't really get over stuff. So I would never tell someone to just get over it, but I mean more of like a hurdle or this kind of um, you know, just lump that's hard to scale and then move forward with. Okay, we wanna focus on your receptivity. So focusing into the receptive palm points. Opening this channel, clearing this channel. So you may receive again, this inspiration, this sense of connection, the resources, the manifestations, what flows to you, the love, when you are comfortable knowing you don't need to have want, right? Because you are, you are connected to literally everything, but existential, right? Focusing now on your dominant channel, dominant palm point. Opening, empowering, activating these channels, so you can share, so that you too can connect. There can be a back and forth, where you're creative, you're expressive, you're holding boundaries, you're adding, vocalizing or how you carry yourself, what you radiate even simply. Just these outward channels. We have this flow, this balance swimming through. Alright, gonna fluff up the aura. Beautiful. Well, I hope you enjoyed our little session today. I hope this serves you. I just wanna thank you so much for allowing me to share a little piece of your path today and for being such a significant part of mine. Thank you, of course, to Patreon, the beautiful people I get to work with. Um, those of you who subscribe, leaving comments and likes and all that really helps the channel and I'm so grateful. I'm not looking to blow up, you know what I mean? But growth is still always good. It's very helpful, you know, so thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. From the very bottom of my heart, I bow to the divine within you and I into this beautiful connection, this strange connection we share, or what some may say is strange. Very much love to you and namaste.